Michael? Can you hear me, Michael?
I can hear you.
Okay, I just was having trouble with the audio.
Okay, six o'clock. This is the informal meeting for December 11th, 2023. Meeting minutes. Copies of draft minutes of the November 9th, 13th, 16th, and 21st meetings are posted on the city website. Committee reports have also been posted on the city desktop. We're gonna go right into our presentation tonight. We have Gal Whitworth Laird here from Star Lighthouse, who is part of the design team for Charles Williams Park. We're gonna take it away, Gal.
Okay, where should I stand for that?
Oh, I guess anywhere you like.
Anywhere, okay.
You don't wanna block that, that's about it.
I like to point, you know. Although, I don't know, people will screen through something.
Or, yeah. They can see it.
You can, I can point through you.
Okay, great.
Okay, can you do full screen? Yes, possible. Full screen.
Wow, where are you?
Great.
So.
There.
Where, where am I? I can't even see it from here. Okay.
Okay, perfect, okay. So, hello, everyone. I'm really thrilled to report on the updates to the design for Charles Williams Park. We've been working for the past couple of months in a small core group, which has included Michael, the mayor, Maya from the Department of Hues, Malachi, and also Katie from Spark and Hudson. So we've kind of been a core thinking group on this. So thank you for guiding the process. So, we are here in the process. We did a first exercise in big picture thinking about the park in the context of the rest of the city. And right now, we're working on refining the schematic design, working on cost estimates, and starting to build together construction documents, which is the next step. We're here tonight because we want your opinion, your buy-in, your ideas on where we are in the process with the design, so we can dig into the construction documents with everyone on board. We don't wanna go too far and then have someone say, wait, hold on, no, that's not where we're gonna go. So that's, we wanna share, share the process and gather some feedback from you all. So, as I mentioned, people. As I mentioned, the first part of the process was looking at neighborhood connectivity. How does Charles Williams fit into the rest of what's going on in Hudson, geographically, and all of the other projects? So, here we're looking at an overview of the park on the northern edge of town on Mill Street. And what's really interesting is how it's connected to a lot of other city-owned parcels. So it's poised to be a pretty strategic place going forward as other projects are developed and the neighborhood grows. Across the street, it's also owned by the City of Hudson. The City of Hudson idea owns, this is actually an adjacent parcel that's 62 acres, includes the wetland, but is immediately adjacent to the park. And then you have the landfill and the Greenport Conservation Area here, and the high school here. And then, you know, the entire northern section of the developed neighborhood is there. So it's really sandwiched in between a lot of neighborhood resources. One of the first, actually, go back for one second. One thing I think is really important to point out is that, right now, only two and a half acres of the park are developed, and it's a 12.3 acre parcel. So you're really only using a postage stamp of what's there. So, we looked at that as we started to develop the plans. So, here's looking at the park in its context of circulation, broader circulation. It's right at the trailhead for the Empire State Trail. And, as well, this connects to the high school. So that's already a well-used pad. So it's something that we wanna continue to connect with and encourage. Next, it is not in the flood zone. There's a tip of it here in the Hundred Deer flood zone. So anything we do is relatively safe over the next several decades. But a lot of this, as I'm sure many of you know, is in the Hundred Deer flood zone. So over time, that may affect the development of the street grid and things that are going on in that area. But the park itself is high and dry, so that's good. It does have some drainage issues just from the runoff and the types of soils that are there. Basically, where the playground is, is more or less the low spot of the site. And there are two drainage channels that go underground, one here and one here, that ultimately connect out to the North Bay wetlands and the river. Can't see it, but there's a storm drain right here at the bottom. So this is the street right away. In looking at the connectivity to the north, we actually worked on a plan for a trail across the North Bay. Gosh, I think it's like six years ago now, I'm not sure exactly. And in fact, plans to connect Greenport to Hudson are still in the works. And I don't know how much this group has been involved in the negotiations with the Land Conservancy, but the Land Conservancy is really interested in establishing a stronger walking connection between Hudson and the Greenport Conservation Area, which is here. And they have been negotiating, crossing behind the landfill to get to both the high school and conservation area from Hudson. And there's a really clear connection across Charles Williams. So this is really important to keep in mind as both projects are merged together. We wanna make sure that the alignment works for everyone. And I believe the Land Conservancy is also interested in helping to maintain the trail. But I don't know where they'll begin and the city will end. So there's some, you know, where responsibilities meet is important here. So, this is a copy of the plan that they produced before we worked on the access trail, just looking at how to better connect Greenport to the rest of the city. And here's Charles Williams Park. So you see, this has kind of been on the books for a long time, it's just never, never happened. So I think the last couple of slides here are just looking at these existing conditions today. People, there's already a desire line there that connects to Charles Williams, and this is down to Second Street. So, you know, with some grading, some mowing, some clearing, you don't have to do much, you can make that a better trail. Next, here's looking at the street connections that get you there. This is Second Street and Mill Street. Both those streets are on the sidewalks, no street trees. So, you know, long-term planning as the neighborhood develops, think about sidewalks, making it more pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly. You know, kids, you know, playing in the street, give a little more space to that scale of development. And then here again is the Sunday, might consider, can I look in here? I know you did that zigzag ramp. There's, it's on the, you know, there could be a direct connection to the park, Third Street. Here's the Empire State Trail. Every time I've gone to the side, there's lots of people using that connection point and having better access of the park, I think would be really well-used right away. There's a running club that meets and they run up and down the hill there. So if they didn't have to run up it, they could actually do a loop if the trail were developed. So, just in sum, the key takeaways from zooming out before we zoomed in was to look at installing sidewalks on North Second and Mill Street, street trees and lighting where possible, improve the trail connections to North Second Street. Here, you could, you know, imagine larger neighborhood loops, even if you don't go all the way to Greenport. Work with the Land Conservancy on the North Bay Trail connection and connect more directly to the Empire State Trail. And then, long-term, look at that North Third Street connection. It's right there. I think Malachi suggested a jimp of the line. Maybe we can, you know, short-term, we can zip into the park. And here's just a concept sketch of thinking about pedestrianizing and greening Mill Street itself. It's actually very wide towards the end, too. I think it's well beyond what's needed for two parks traffically. So, so that's the key takeaways from our look at the connectivity of the park. So next, I'll go into the site design itself. We picked up where you left off with the community input that Spark organized. And these are the priorities from that visioning session with the community, the play area, universal accessibility, outdoor fitness, a basketball court, having flexible use lawn area, increased connectivity, that came up then, too, whether it's within the park or the larger context. Plantings, it's pretty bare for a large park. It's completely mown, there's very little shade, and I think just a handful of trees. So could definitely use some trees. And if you're going to create such a desirable place to be, you need a public restroom. So, those are the takeaways from that exercise. This October, we did have a survey performed by a licensed land surveyor, and we have one-foot contours of the immediate park area and the existing features, trees, and they're not on this plan, but all of the utilities connected to the park. So that's the park as it is today. Looked at the soils. One of the issues with drainage actually has to do with the amount of clay in certain areas. So you do get, the water comes down the hill, but doesn't infiltrate. Next, and then here are just some images of the park today. You can see that, you know, the actively used area, and then this really quite beautiful, actually cedar forest that's kind of grown up spontaneously on that part of the hillside. And existing play equipment, it's not accessible, and the lack of safety surface, it's not meeting code and one of the challenges of today with play. Next, here's a view looking back. In working with Maya and the working group, we talked a lot about nature play being part of the playground. And rather than try to force everything into one area, we've looked at creating a secondary play area that's focused on nature play. And this area right here is relatively flat. It's close to that area, it's next to the cedar forest. So we've started to evolve that concept as well. Next. And then here, looking back towards this open lawn, our plan differs from the initial concept plan in a couple of significant ways. And one is that, in trying to take advantage of more of the park's space, we're proposing to remove this asphalt pad and that asphalt, section of asphalt there. So the open space is really true. Is maximized. So by removing that, you end up with this really long, open, green, flexible area. It can be soccer, it can be cricket, it could be, you know, some pop-up, something in the winter. It leaves it more open. If you put the basketball court there, you're chopping up that space. So we propose moving that and shifting the basketball to an active recreational court. So, just in terms of programming, this is how things are organized in the current plan. So you have active recreation here where the existing park is, there'll be a rain garden and some drainage improvements here. This is left open as a multi-use field and restored where the slab of asphalt is now. And then up here will be nature play and then the trail access that can continue north and the connections here along Mill Street. So we've organized, same program, just organized a little differently. So here's a bird's eye view of the current conceptual plan. The basketball court is over here. It's high school size, 84 by 15. And I heard recently Hudson's like doing, high school is like number six in the state or something. Somebody said they're doing really, really well.
No one has, has been there on, they both did when, both the boys and the girls did, they're gonna get basketball and drive it, and I, and I'm telling them.
And so, having a good court for the winning team within biking or walking distance, I think is a really great idea as well for the neighborhood, to have a really nice court within walking distance would be a great asset. We do propose to replace the existing play equipment with new equipment for ages two to five and five to 12, and link everything together with a walking loop. And here's outdoor fitness here, so this is outdoor fitness. And I did, I am showing a pickleball court, which is an ad alternate, but it seems like it's something that a lot of people are starting to play. And if there's some interest for, in it, it's not a huge ad. If you're out there already doing the asphalt and the path work. So, did squeeze in a pickleball court. Up here is the nature play. And then, refinished parking area with accessible drop-off spaces right here at the entrance to the park. So there'll be three entrances, a path entrance near the trail, of a major accessible interest near the public restroom, and then the Mill Street entrance here. So kind of funneling everyone into the park. I did measure since this afternoon, the loop, if you go back, the walking loop, if you do this loop up to the nature play and back around, is roughly a quarter mile. So that, to the path in and of itself, is a resource once it's done. And it makes all of these program areas accessible, something that they aren't now. So, and when we talk about accessibility as designers, it's not just wheelchairs. It's strollers, scooters, bicycles. It's making it so that everyone can enjoy these program areas effortlessly. So everything is less than 5% slope, so there's no need for handrails. And it's a seamless experience for everyone, not just intentionally accessible. For all ages and all abilities. Here's a view of the proposed basketball court. We are putting chain link fence on either end, just so the balls don't go into other program areas and people are overshooting. So it brackets it, but it's not enclosed entirely. And this is the type of backboard, a polycarbonate backboard with something called color seal coat on the asphalt. So it's a special color treatment that does the strip, that covers the striping and delineates the boundaries, commonly used in the exterior environment. Outdoor fitness, there'll be a combination of flood bars, sit-ups, all pieces of the body in this kind of groovy workout area. And finally, some early concepts for the nature play area, inspired a lot by this, having this core working group and Maya wanting to do things with the Department of Hues. So I think it's really exciting to have, you're getting two playgrounds. And you know, kind of the messy one and the neat one. Or, you know, sometimes you don't wanna go to the messy playground, but sometimes you, you know, on a Saturday, if you're willing to get dirty, you can go up and play in the sandbox, maybe with some logs around it, a little arch, maybe a circuit that you go through, maybe building teepees. One idea was maybe harvesting some of the red cedar in the area next door and using it for the nature play. Next, some images of what that might be. You can get pillows as bear root saplings and do lots of things with them. So it'd be kind of a fun, a fun school project. And, you know, we'll bring the path up to it, create the area for it, and, you know, then it's the imagination that can build it. So I think it's a really nice idea and could dovetail really nicely with these programs and, you know, any other organizations that, you know, after school, that wanted to get involved in kind of a fun project to have going, ongoing. And there's a lot of research, actually, on the importance of, you know, nature play and its more valuable play environments. So you have best of both worlds here. Here's a zoomed-in view of the new play area. And, I think they carry on either side of the pavilion. The goal here is to make it so that everyone, you know, you can have a birthday party, a barbecue, be in the playground, that there's enough activities for everyone, really have a neighborhood hub. So, next, some images of the play equipment for five to 12. And after that, so those are the key program elements that were part of the initial outreach and are part of the current plan. We are also working with the city and Michael on the lighting for the park. As some of you are all, assuming you all know that the lighting for Hudson is being shifted from National Grid to Hudson. And so there's a design group administered through NICA, I believe, that will share our base plan with, and they can give the wiring, the conduit runs, and electrical loads for the park, and that can be implemented in parallel. So ideally, we'll do the underground work all at the same time. So you can get the conduit utilities for the building, utilities for the spray shower in at once. So, and then, there are two existing electric poles now on the survey. You could just add preliminaries to those poles or do independent poles, depending on what's in the NICA, depending on what's in the contract and the budget. But I think it would be important to give the parking area at this, at the dead end, a little more light, so that, you know, if you're leaving a dust, you can see where you're going. The idea is to just light the main core recreational area and leave the rest unlit. This is not a very good image, but the idea you get, add that, add the pole to the light pole, and then the other pole would be the City of Hudson standard. We've created a preliminary plant palette, just looking at the types of soils and the amount of water that is there. There are certain types of oaks, the pin oaks and swamp white oaks that actually like that kind of soil and that much water, as well as river birches. I'm thinking maybe small groves near the playground to really create a more intimate landscape. Right now, it's kind of wide open. So once these things are developed, use the landscape to really enclose and create more enjoyable spaces within, you know, smaller spaces within the park. We have included, and I should have preface at the beginning, not everything fits in the budget, and I'll go through that in a minute. We try to be as simple and streamlined as possible. In order to do a new public restroom, we looked at a lot of different suppliers. We did look at the Portlander, but they were like off the charts. Yeah, we got a quote from them. So we've settled with ROMTEC. It's basically a kit that comes with the roof, the fixtures, the door, the sinks, the block, which is sourced locally, and it comes unassembled and you assemble it on-site with sign and seal drawings. It's kind of cheap, simple, robust. So for now, that's what we're holding in the contract. It has two accessible bathrooms and a fairly sizable mechanical room. It's about 16 by 13. One idea that we don't have a rendering of, but is, you know, if you did, it is concrete block, you could do it smooth and then paint it. Could be have a community mural on or something, give it a little more life than just the concrete block. So that's something that can happen with relatively little change in cost. We anticipated that it could have solar on the roof. And so that's part and parcel of what will be in the bid documents. In looking at the cost estimate, trying to get as much as possible for the budget that we have and build in flexibility for things that the budget won't allow, we're anticipating that the DPW could do some of the carpentry work for the park, removal of the asphalt, and perhaps excavation for the rain garden and some of the rough grading for the areas. They did do that for us at Promenade Hill, and they did a great job. They're good at taking things down and doing some of the rough earthwork. They also did the conduit for Promenade Hill Park, so that we know that's something that can be done in-house and would save a lot being done in-house versus being done through a private contractor. Next. So, right now, the current construction budget is $280,000. For that budget, our preliminary, including in-kind services for the DPW, that budget can do almost all the underground work, the drainage, the pavement, the utilities, the walking loop, the basketball court, the fencing. The nature play is something that's ongoing, but at least some of the rough work for that could go in, the parking area and the planting. So that is a conservative estimate of what you can do for the $280,000, based on current bid prices for concrete, path work, et cetera. So, the goal is to do the contract documents with the entire plan in it and have the other elements that is alternatives. In the meantime, we're also looking to partner with other organizations or granting grants or foundations to fund other pieces of it. So, just last week, we heard that the client, Spark Columbia, was interested in doing tree planting, they could do the trees. The, you know, if there's a possibility of a grant for the outdoor fitness, we could dovetail that in. So we're not going to take anything out of the plan, we're gonna detail it. You have us on board as landscape architects. We also have a mechanical engineer and a civil engineer. So take advantage of the fact we're here, we'll assemble a whole package for you, understanding that that budget doesn't, there was a lot on that wish list, and we think that everything on the wish list is really valid, but it doesn't fit within the current budget. So, in the base plan, at least the foundations are laid for everything that is to come. So we would run the water line to the area where the spray shower would go, all the utilities for the public restroom, and all of the foundations and conduit for the lighting. So I know it's not very glamorous, but a lot, a lot does have to happen underground there before you can put everything on top. So that's where we are. And if the bids come in and it's less than this, you can start to pick and choose which things to layer into the contract. But I think the bottom line is, there needs to be a little more outreach for building these things that aren't in the plan. But part of what we want to hear is from you, if you agree with this approach of, let's detail, let's detail the whole package, see where, you know, see where we are in March, April, and either some things will be able to be added because of increased budget or we'll put it out to bid and you'll get real prices on what those ad alternates are. And at that point, you can solicit for those exact amounts. It's always, it's hard to know, construction costs don't go down over time, I will tell you that. So just ending again on the schedule where we are, we'd like to make sure that everyone's on board with the approach, the scope, and keep moving if everyone's on board with where we are with the project. I do have, can we, we'll do, okay, one last two minutes. We have a.
Oh, right.
We have a, since we did a 3D model for the park, just to do the renderings, the programs now are such that you can, once you have that 3D model, you can walk through it. So we have a little walk of the park for you. So there's the, this is the rain garden that we have at the bottom of the hill. The tree species, these are amalang here, that's on the list. The picnic area adjacent to the pavilion. We do extend the pavement to present the pavilion just a little bit, so it's completely accessible. Boom. There's the fitness equipment on the right, the pickleball, the basketball, going by the nature play. Yeah, it's pretty amazing what you can do now with these programs. This is a program called Lumion that basically takes the 3D model and assigns materials. You can pick which season, et cetera, up the hill. So here's where the MOPAP would begin, that goes. Et cetera, up the hill. So here's where the MOPAP would begin, that goes, that would connect, um, behind to North Bay. As you can see, this is not. As, as, as graded as the lower areas of the park and it, we, we take a lot of work to do that, to make it accessible, but. Um, but at least it'll be more navigable. It's gonna be a good sledding hill. And there, you can just get a sense of what it would be like just to have the, this area, just one long, open lawn. Uh, bordered by trees. Down around. Back to the, around the nature play. Didn't have time to pick up music. Maybe we can, we can work on that. Maybe, you know, someone could. Very good for us. Boom. Um, the doors, I think the middle conversation would be on this side and on the backside, have maybe a bulletin board or a bench or something. Um, we're showing the basketball court, the, the steel coach. And then this is the entrance over here that would come down the hill from the entire state trail. There we go. There's, so happy to take questions, comments.
Yeah, uh, it's a very well thought plan, first of all, I really like it, um. Since it's a neighboring, uh, flood zones, are you planning to do just the. Um, extra rain in the area? And, um, and my second suggestion is it would be nice to have, uh. An earth vegetable garden for kids to grow.
Yeah, no, good, good comments. Um, so we are going to do, uh, a rain garden at the bottom of the slope. More or less, you know how there's that piece of asphalt, kind of keyhole shaped piece of asphalt that comes in? That corner does get really soggy, um, so the idea is to excavate and, um, a rain garden has up to. Three feet of aggregate, um, gravel to help infiltrate water. So we plan to do a rain garden at that corner. Um, and have an overflow connection to the, the storm drain on the other side, so. So imagine a, a, a bowl with a, a lot of gravel in it, and if the water were to come. A- above the level of the bowl, we have something called a beehive grate where the water would still go into the pipe, so. It infiltrates as much as possible, but then there's an outflow pipe to the storm sewer. So we are planning on doing, um, that. And, and also there's some existing swales that we would keep and make sure they're clear and functional. Um, so that the water coming off the hill doesn't pool in the, in the playground. Uh, in terms of the playground itself, um. The elevations, for example, of the basketball court in the building, they'll be just a little higher than what's there now, so that. You know, on, you know, a big storm, you're not going to get, get flooding, so, um, we'll a- anticipate. That it's going to get wetter over time and, and keep things on the high side, but we're not elevating them, you know, three or four feet, given that it is out of the hundred year floodplain. I think it's, it's okay to, um, you know, anticipate that. And, and also the, um, materials. For the public restroom, it's concrete block, right? So it's not gonna rot, it's not going to, you know, it's. It can withstand a little bit of, of inundation if it had to. Same thing with the basketball court.
Yeah, um, and being, uh, you know, that it's Hudson and I think it was the, the one that got initial. Um, the name that would be in the question was, uh. What are the test tables, chairs to be implemented and also just to, you know, again, the. You know, with the youth and seniors, uh, engage, you know, that's something that I feel is crucial for Hudson. And, um, hopefully that can be implemented in there as well.
That's a pretty easy add, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you just have to tell me where.
In different areas.
Yeah.
Council members, uh, Mark.
Yes, I had a question. It's Margaret. Can you hear me? Um, could you go back to the slide where you were showing, um, uh, the base budget and the, and alternate one through four? Could you just pull that up? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this.
It's thirty seven.
One more back.
No, that's it, this is it.
No, no, that, this one, yes, this one. So just, I want to make sure I'm understanding this, so the, uh, the two eight hundred and eighty. Uh, current budget covers everything on the left hand side, is that correct?
Correct.
And then everything on the right hand side, these are additives, correct? So if we were to do all of this, the total would be right now about. Five hundred thousand, am I reading that right?
A little more than that.
But, well, yeah, I'm sorry, excuse me, the add-ons would be, would be two fifty plus two is four fifty. And fifty is five, yeah, but the, uh, those alternates are not so much alternates as additional, correct?
Uh, well, correct, um, although the base bid does cover some of the costs of those items. For example, the utilities and, and things that anticipate these, these alternatives, so some of the costs are borne by these bid.
Would it be possible, when you pull this together, would it be possible to get something that kind of lined out? This is what the base is gonna cover and now for the new play equipment, that's gonna be new, like. Whatever is not in the base, just put in those, those other pieces, things that are not covered in the base, so we get a sense of. If we were to have all of these wishlist items, what the total would be, is that possible?
Absolutely, um, and we, we have now a fairly detailed plan, so we can cost all of these items. Pretty accurately, and this was based on this preliminary plan, so it's pretty close.
Thank you, that was my question. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it, thank you.
No, that, that's, it's valid and I, you know, I. Yeah, everything, it'd be great to do everything in the plan, but I have to be, you know, realistic when doing the cost estimate, but. You know, these, there's more than meets the eye when you're doing play equipment, you know, the, the play equipment is one thing, but there's a massive concrete foundation underneath the. Warranties and certified installers, you know, there's a lot that goes into construction of the play area. I did want to point out, I think I forgot to mention, um, the splash pad, you know, you can, you could do some. You know, you could do a more modest version or a more extravagant version based on which type of jets you fit, you pick, so. Things like that, we could probably s- squeeze in something simple, um, should the bids come in lower, so there. There are high and low ranges of these different things, but, um, bottom line is, uh. To get everything, um, you have to bid them as alternates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, um, yeah, first off, congratulations, I wish this was like ready now, it's like so exciting. Around the corner and it's gonna be an amazing addition to the neighborhood and. I appreciate, um, they were addressing a lot of residents' concerns as well in terms of the lighting and, and the drainage in the area, which. Seem to be top of the list when we spoke to people in the area, um. I just, two like minor questions off that, it's like, for the surface of the basketball, is the color, is that like a rubberized or vulcanized texture or it's just? More of like a paint on top of the asphalt?
It, it's something in between, um, it's a sport court surface, so first, the first thing is that the asphalt itself is different than a road. Asphalt is a finer grained, um, top course. And it's a, it's kind of a thick, I don't know if you can call it, it's like a thickened paint, so it's not rubberized, but it's not just paint.
Got it.
It actually has some grit in it, so it, it's not slippery. It's specifically designed for, um, basketball courts. It's, it, there's a couple of, um, different companies, Deco, there's like a handful of companies that basically do every. Basketball court, cast court in the country, but.
Yeah.
Um, and, and they can be any colors, we pick the city of the high school colors because we're here. That would, that would be, and we can even also do a logo in the center if you wanted to.
Uh, yeah, and then the second question was, um, pickleball court, I know it's a, a potential like alternate addition, um, I think that. Having another, um, asphalt like area is a great addition, um. But, you know, pickleball is like, one of the fastest growing sports, could also be a total fad and, you know, I feel like I've been to so many. Like parks, you know, whatever, it's just like, what's that one where it's like the, like has the, um. The big scooper and you throw the balls with the higher line? Yeah, exactly, lacrosse is here to stay, um, but, uh, yeah, the, uh, I'm just, I'm just wondering if. In designing the pickleball court, there was maybe an eye towards making it more of a multi-use space and, and. That could also be used for other activities, like, like a bounce wall or anything like that, um. Just to have that space with the, pickleball.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Like we're all hoping for it, um, yeah, just having, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. Actually, you know, what, um. Couple of that, a hundred percent, it's very, I don't think any project we've worked on recently, like everyone wants to pick a ball court.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess one of the reasons is it's, um, easier to learn than tennis.
Yeah.
And so like, so it's easier for young people to, to pick up quickly and, um. The elder, you know, joins.
Yeah.
It's, 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 it's a good all age sport.
Sure.
So it's, it's taken off pretty quickly, um, but that said, I agree, what, what else could happen there, um. It could be perhaps double, like maybe that you could put sleeves for badminton.
Yes.
Volleyball.
Yeah.
Like it could, it could, it could serve as a multi-furthest court and.
Or just thinking that the pickleball court doesn't prohibit certain activities in terms of like.
Yeah.
Are the stands for the nets gonna get made like a, you know, a soccer mattress or something for like a small.
Right, like a, like a, like a, just a little.
Yeah, cause eighty-four by fifty is probably pretty good for like a small soccer.
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good point, um, you can, uh, you could design it so that the, the net's in a sleeve.
Yeah.
So, but that means also that someone has to take the sleeve in and out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So anytime you put flexibility in something, you have to, who, who's, who's gonna take this thing in and out? It sounds like you just volunteer.
A lot more time to do here.
But, but I think that's a good point. Yeah.
Okay, any other question, any other questions? Public? I didn't see anybody. Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you. No, it's really, really, I'm excited to hear it.
Okay, let's get to our, uh, working business. Here it is. Fire report.
Burn town, where's my goal?
Um, for the month of November, we had thirty-four calls, six were fires. Cooking, cooking fires, building fires, uh, submutal aid. Uh, one injured, one accident with no injuries, one hazmat incident, which was at the prison. Uh, one gas leak. Two cover assignments. Good intent calls and a whole bunch of false alarms. So we're, uh, as of today, we're four hundred and eight calls for the year. So, a little bit below last year and the year before. About fifty shy right now, the next couple of weeks will probably be up another twenty mark. We're out there for the year, so. Wow, I appreciate everybody that's, won't be here next year, uh, for your support of the fire department, um. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions from council members?
Or, I, I expect to be invited back for the honorable ride.
Okay, thank you guys. Um, youth department, Liz York is online.
Hello. Love to be there with you guys, but I've been a little under the weather, so I figured I'd, um, spare you all. I think I remember how to share my screen, so. All right. Let's pull this up. Do I remember how to show slideshow? Nope. All right. So for our December Department of Youth report. Um, we've been so grateful to our programmers for the hard work they've put in, the amazing opportunities they've offered our students and staff so far this school year. Flying Deers program and Garden Club's program have both ended and we'll pick those back up again in the spring. Um, the students have enjoyed the programs and will be waiting patiently throughout the winter months to see if some of their hard work will pay off. The over one hundred flower bulbs they planted in the yard at the youth center will start emerging in early spring. Uh, and it'll remind the students of the hard work that they put in. Also in early spring, the trees they planted over oak dill will start to bloom and get buds. And the garlic bulbs that they planted will start to poke up out of the garden bed, so. This will be a great lesson in practicing patience for your hard work to pay off and hopefully we'll be able to share some photos of this with you when, um, the students are observing these. And both, uh, Flying Deer Program and Garden Club are, um, funded by Friends of Hudson Youth. One of the new programs that started up for the winter is drumming with Operation Unite, uh, the kids are learning how to listen to and follow rhythms on hand drums. The students are free to come in and out of the circle as they want, um, but more often than not, once they step in, they're hooked. Um, it's really good for, you know, teamwork, listening and communication, um, and it's a lot of fun. There's always a bunch of smiles in the group and. Operation Unite volunteers their time to offer their, our students this program. Uh, we also just started a three-week program with the Shaker Museum. They've got a guest artist, Becca, who's a fiber arts, um, artist. And Weaver coming in, she'll be working with the students to teach them a series of fiber arts based in the history of Shaker life skills. Uh, students will be able to take home a completed project each week, um, today, actually, we made some, um. We wove, wo- wove some bowls, it was really nice, baskets technically, but. Um, in addition to the regular programming that we have been doing this month, we also took some of our youngest participants to Proctor's Cedar and Schenectady. For a showing of A Charlie Round Christmas. They had a really great time, uh, they really enjoyed the show and this was funded by Friends of Hudson Youth. We'll continue to work with Benos de Circus, Beautiful Racket, Art School of Columbia County and Operation Unite through the winter. And we hope to add several more program opportunities for our students as well, um, something that we're really excited about that is in the works for our teen participants. Is an opportunity presented by a local barber for our participants to complete a twelve-week barber certification class. Uh, where at the end they'll have their own kit, they'll be presented with a cer- certi- certificate of completion. Um, and then this, um, programmer will also be offering the opportunity to explore job placement with them. They'll also get bloodborne pathogens training, safety and hygiene training as well, um, and we're pretty excited about that. So while Operation Unite is, um, working with us on no cost, as well as the Shaker Museum, all these other programs that we've talked about so far are funded by Friends of Hudson Youth. Um, this is something I'm really excited about, so starting in the spring of twenty twenty-four, the Department of Youth will begin its first ever official. Department of Youth internship program. So the intention of this program is not only to introduce young people to the workforce with job, job training and life skills, but also to develop an understanding of civil service and local government. So students will be given the opportunity to, to apply to work with us through the Hudson High School. Um, we'll choose three participants to join us, the work, we'll work with them to provide education and training for working and direct care roles. As well as opportunities to learn about civil service structure, um, exams and opportunities, we'll have them attend local meetings such as this common council meeting. We'll have them meet with local government officials, excuse me. To build a deeper understanding of what it takes to make their city run and also to, um, expose them to the job opportunities that are available within their own community within civil service. And this project is being supported by a grant from the Fund for Columbia County of the Berkshire-Tconnick Community Foundation. Uh, we're really excited about this opportunity and, uh, can't wait to get started. Um, we talked about numbers and so at the beginning of this month, we had a hundred and forty-nine kids registered for all of our programming. At the time of the report, we had a hundred and sixty-five, uh, it's an increase of sixteen students over the month, mostly in the teenage group. Um, our daily average for teen attendance has gone up, while our daily average for both after-school programs remains pretty consistently the same. Um, and this month we served over seven hundred fifty snacks and over six hundred meals. I don't have an exact number because we lost a couple of our sheets, but, um, we've been practicing tracking that for when we're getting reimbursed for our meals, so. Um, some community engagement this past weekend, which is now two weekends ago, um. We were lucky enough to once again work as Santa's helpers along with the Hudson Hall staff at Winter Walk. We were spotted by a lot of our kids, um, from after-school and summer camp. And as they waited their turn to talk to Santa, it was really nice to see them in a different setting, um, and we helped to hand out a book to each child who visited Santa. They were generously donated and wrapped by the Hudson Hall and we're really grateful to be a part of this tradition. It was a lot of fun and we'll see you again next year.
Can you enlarge that picture of Santa?
I don't want to scare anyone, so I made it, you know, just. Um, another event that we had, which was this past weekend now, was our winter meet and greets, um. The student performance didn't actually happen, we didn't have enough kids show up, um, but there's some really beautiful student artwork that. Um, but there's some really beautiful student artwork that was shown um and was completed with the Art School of Columbia County. And on the same local barber, um Yushon that's doing our, the barber shop offered free haircuts to any youth that showed up. Um, and Tom was there. I unfortunately was too sick to show up, but it was. Um, a nice start to to something like this and hopefully we'll be able to do a bigger one in the spring and we'll see all of you there. Um, also this past weekend, two of our very own at the Department of Youth were recognized at the forty under forty celebration. So Nikira Roach is our program coordinator. She's been with us since the summer of twenty twenty two. Yeah, that's right. Her impact uh since joining the team has been really amazing. She's really revitalizing how we run our programs at the department. You know, she went to the youth um center when she was younger. She worked at the Oakdale Camp. I mean, she's just been a part of not only the Department of Youth, but the community for. A long time. We're really grateful to have her. Um, I'm really excited for her to be honored this weekend. Um, also recognized was Isaiah Heard, who's been with the department for over a decade uh as one of the longest employed rec attendants we have. Heard uses his influence as a coach and community member to connect with the students he's working with and to help them feel seen and safe at the youth center. Um, he really is invaluable. I'm so grateful to have him and we're really excited that these two members um of the community are also members of our department. And really proud of their achievements. Youth Department Basketball League registration will end on the sixteenth. That's to give us time enough to actually make teams. Um, we've got over a hundred kids registered already for both skills and drills and team play. Um, practices are gonna, games are gonna start in January and they'll run through the month of February. Uh, we've already started a few skills and drills on the weekends for people who have registered. This is just helping us to get kids out there, kind of assess them. So maybe the teams are a little bit more even this year. We have a more awareness of everyone's skills, so. Um, we have a lot of volunteers for coaches right now, but we could always use some extra help. So if you're interested in being volunteer coach for teams or skills and drills, just reach out to us and let us know. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions from council members?
Yeah, I just, I think as what you said, is the internship paid? We pay for the internship?
Yep, the internship is a paid internship. We also want the students to learn the value of their time as well. Um, so we want that to be paid for them. And again, that's through the grant as well.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Any questions? Anyone online? Questions? Okay, thank you, Liz.
Thanks, y'all.
Very good, Liz. Thanks. I take Mia, Mia online? She doesn't seem to be there. So we will skip to Heather. Heather, is there?
I am here.
Here we go.
Okay, this is gonna be short and sweet because uh there's a lot going on, so. Let me just share my screen.
Well, good. We're, we're not in the red again.
Okay, so we're gonna go through the uh usual. Revenues that we'd like to keep track of. So you can see uh parking revenues through November. We're at a hundred and three percent of our total forecast. Overall, which is great. Um, as we have been seeing, uh, Front Street Municipal Lot is significantly. Above budget, but that's because we were very conservative in our twenty twenty three estimate, given how twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty one looked after COVID. So it has clearly rebounded healthily and um I think probably in the next meeting, I will have the twenty twenty four budget numbers. Amended to this, so you can see that we've taken that into consideration. Parking tickets continues to be uh on the decline, but it has picked up and we've talked about those issues before between the software and the lack of parking enforcement officers. But overall, as a parking category, um, we're in good shape there. Um, even though it's only ninety percent versus year ago, but again, that um largely reflects the conservative budgeting we had for uh Front Street. Uh, building permits and fees, we had a big jump. Um. So you can see we're at a hundred and sixty percent of building permits. That is pretty much directly related to one project. We had an eighty nine thousand dollar uh building permit come in in the last month. Uh, I believe that was for Pocketbook Factory because they're in now phase two of their project. Uh, phase one was sort of like cleaning up. Phase two is actually development and build, so that was obviously a significant contribution, so that's great. Um, sales, mortgage and lodging tax. So we've got new numbers this month for pretty much all of them. So sales tax, we did get our third quarterly payment in. We are now at one point seven seven four million. Uh, which is seventy seven percent of the budget, which is pretty much where we wanna be because uh we're anticipating only one more payment. So you would like it to be roughly seventy five percent, a little higher because January is generally a little lower. So we're on target there. Um, mortgage tax, you can see we came in a little bit under. We netted out. So those are the two payments that we've received now. We netted with a hundred and eighty eight thousand. Uh, versus a budget of two twenty five and you can see that two twenty five was conservative relative to what twenty twenty two was. But you know, it's a, it it varies considerably from year to year, so it's pretty hard to anticipate. So eighty four percent is not so bad. Uh, lodging tax, uh, this might be a little deceptive, so this is through November. We're at three hundred and seventy two. Versus a forecast of five fifty. Um, not only do we have December, but there's also a portion of what comes in in the first quarter of twenty twenty four. That gets charged back to twenty twenty three because of the way that, that, because the fact that the um. Sales tax filings are for prior periods, so we won't really have a good sense of that until probably the end of March. Uh. Uh, one of the reasons why this is gonna be so short is because we are in the midst of not just one, but two audits. Uh, the audit of the twenty twenty two financial statements and a single federal audit because we incurred more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in spending. Uh, the auditors are relentless, um, which is better than they were last year, which was sort of MIA. Uh, but it's um, it's, it's gonna be tough. It's tough. Um. As you all know, we're moving to ADP on payroll, so um Danielle and Sam and all the payroll clerks uh have been working. Uh, with ADP to coordinate the transition over. Uh, the goal is to start with ADP on one one twenty twenty four. We are probably going to keep paychecks uh. On board just to make sure that we have a backup in case ADP doesn't work for a month or so. But assuming that ADP works, that cost will be negligible because the majority of costs associated with paychecks is. How many checks we process, how many things they have to mail out, how many things they have to print. And if we don't do our payroll through them, that number should be nominal. Uh, sidewalk improvement district. So I did meet with uh Real Property and I did discuss issues with uh the folks up in Ithaca. Um, overall, I think we have a relatively straightforward way of getting that information onto the tax bill, so that's great. The one issue is going to be whether or not, and I think this is a decision of Real Property, not of mine. Whether or not those fees need to be included in the tentative assessment role. If they do, that tentative assessment role has to be finished by, I believe, May first, which means that we would need. The sidewalk assessment rules for the twenty twenty five tax bills no later than March of next year. So, you know, in terms of getting that. Um, you know, that committee together and putting that person in place and developing the software or the Excel spreadsheets. Or whatever you're gonna do to determine what those fees are. Um, that is the worst case scenario. Best case scenario is it does not have to be on the tentative assessment role, in which case we buy ourselves several more months. So I'm in conversation with Suzette Bowie at Real Property to determine whether or not they are gonna make the determination of whether or not it has to be on the assessment role. Um, and I will keep you all posted on that. Um, software conversions of both the general ledger and payroll, we were hoping to start in the end of this year. It has now been moved to the first quarter of next year. Uh. There's just a, there's a lot going on, so um we're looking at getting a surety bond because we can't enter into the agreement with National Grid. For the NIPA contract unless we get a surety bond. Our local bank couldn't do it. Um, Michael and I reached out to our insurance provider. We do have a provider, so we're gonna get that done. So we should be ready to go on that project in January, uh, which is the next. Window of time that we can do the contract purchase with National Grid. A bunch of grants going on. Again, Michael and I are working as, as Rob Perry. Um, working to understand where we all are in terms of the grant expenditures and reimbursements. Uh, so that's actually been taking a significant amount of time. Uh, in terms of resolutions, this is probably not a complete list and you'll notice that some of them have question marks. Uh, we've talked about this before. Uh, the tourism reserve, there are monies remaining. Um, we have identified the fact that we will use those reserves in order to fund uh promotional activities in the twenty twenty four budget. I just need to confirm what is or is not outstanding and then uh have a resolution that returns them back to the reserve. And then a budget amendment to move them back into the twenty twenty four budget. Uh, streetlights, this is the NIPA project that we're working on. We continue, we, we are incurring costs. Um, as they proceed along the project. Um, there is a question as to whether or not we want to pay down some of the costs that have already been incurred. In order to avoid the interest payments that NIPA charges us short term for the money that they're basically upfronting for these costs. Um, I've had a couple of conversations with them. I personally think it's probably the right thing to do. I think we have enough cash to cover it. Um, and it will reduce the amount we need to borrow in the long term, but um, again, I just have to find a little window of time to look into that. But I will do that and have something or not for uh next week. And I think the last thing, and I've been in conversation, I think, with Michael on this as well. So, you know, we identified the money for the uh comprehensive plan. Some of it is being funded by a grant. The question is whether or not we need to loan enough money to cover the grant component. Ie, how long will it take for the grant to be reimbursed and do we need to cover that? Or is the amount that we just budgeted enough to float us through the project? And um my guess is we're gonna do a loan because we're not gonna get a clear answer on that question.
Is it the type of grant where you have to put your money on first and then you can do it?
We, I, I believe the entitlement state program allows us to get reimbursed quarterly. So we just have to figure out the, how that's gonna time with the comp plan. Because the, the payments to public work partners are gonna be based on deliverable, not, and not based on a part of your timeline. So we just have to look at the calendar.
Right, exactly. And it's not, I mean, in, in this case, it's not a huge amount of money. It's sixty seven five if I remember correctly, so. I mean, it's not that big of a deal. It's just like, if we're gonna have to do it to give ourselves enough cash flow to cover public works invoices, we just need to get that done. So I, I will figure that out between now and Tuesday.
Do you recognize? Any questions from the council members? Margaret?
Yeah, um, I just had one question, not a question. Can you scroll down to the lodging tax uh screen on your, on your table there? Just go.
Yeah, I'm working on it. Give me a second.
Great. So I ju- just to be clear that I understand this, so this year, twenty twenty three, we're at sixty eight percent. Compared to the same time last year, we were at sixty five percent and we ended up at five fifty. Uh, no, we ended up at five sixty nine last year. Am I reading that correctly? So the.
You are reading that correctly, yep. The third, you know.
We're actually, we're in a slightly better position vis a vis budget this year than we were last year at the same time. Is that correct?
Correct.
But thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, uh, Heather, I didn't, I didn't understand what you said about it was a revenue with a pocketbook factory.
Oh, yeah.
But it, yeah, I can't see that far, so I, I will get that, sorry.
Okay, so um I don't know if you can see it on the screen, but right now our building permits year to date are at three hundred and three thousand dollars. Versus a budget of a hundred and ninety. And that increase is, I mean, obviously there's been, uh, it's been performing pretty well all throughout the year. But in this particular case, we literally had one single building permit that was eighty nine thousand dollars. So that's a big, you know, they're usually, you know, five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars. So a ninety thousand dollar building permit is obviously gonna sway your uh actuals versus budget significantly.
And how are the receivables with their parking rental?
I, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Our, our receiver, the receivables of the Pocketbook Factory is supposed to be paying us for rent for the parking lot, right?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're, I believe they're up to speed on that.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions from council members? Community members, any questions? Okay, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Chief Frankel.
So for November twenty twenty three, use of force incidents with one. Um, officers were arresting a subject, but he didn't comply, got a little violent. Tater was directed at him. Pointed at him, but it wasn't deployed, so he complied immediately. So um no injuries there, no further action necessary for there. Number of arrests were forty three and sixty four total charges for last month. Number of emotionally disturbed persons called were five and number of calls involving drug overdose or suspected drug overdose were also five. Four of which uh HPD administered Narcan and uh subject was brought back. One unfortunately resulted in a death. Uh, we did receive the autopsy report for that and it was um. Related to cocaine and fentanyl use, sadly. And then two of those five were the same person. And he's still with us, so thank goodness for that. Um, and then I did send Vicki a report for the last twelve months of accidents in the city, but none last month. For any involved pedestrians. And that's all that happened.
Questions from council members?
Uh, and then I just wanna say thank you to everyone who won't be with us next year. Thank you for the support um for the police department and for me in this position. And I appreciate him for working with us next year.
No council members? Anyone from the public? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Frankel. And last but not least, um, Mr. Rob Perry. Rob, you're muted. Oh, here we go.
Okay. Uh, so the septic for October was forty two thousand six hundred thirty six, so this is slightly above our pace to meet the budget for the year. Um, this is down at the South Front Street Pump Station and we just seem to have uh some more recurring issues down there. This is by the Amtrak lot. And in this issue, you can see a, a, a lot of grit that's built up and the pumps are actually removed so that we can clean out the wet well. But what happens is, you know, we're finding that there's just a lot of material that's uh just damaging the pumps that are here. There, there was a grit grinder when we first designed and built this pump station and uh it failed about a couple of years ago. Yeah, at that point, you know, we were considering, because the pumps are pretty heavy duty, whether or not it was really necessary. Uh, we don't have grinders ahead of any of the other pump stations in the city and it seems to not be an issue, but for whatever reason, what's happening at South Front Street. Uh, tends to be more, um, I don't know, more impactful, I guess. So anyway, we're uh, we're looking at getting the grinder uh replaced. It's, it's a capital piece of equipment. It's probably about thirty or forty thousand dollars. But these pumps are, you know, price fifty thousand dollars each, so, you know, three of them. Um, but it is, it does operate fine now. This is just something that we're, you know, re- revisiting. The um. Water Department, so we were awarded a two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollar grant. So uh, for the lead service lines, what happened is the, uh, we have until October of twenty twenty four to basically create an inventory. Of all of our lateral water services in the city and. of all of our lateral water services in the city and to identify what is lead, what's galvanized, what's copper and so forth. So, you know, the first steps were, you know, we used our tapbook, uh, help identify any services that were done within the last forty or fifty years, because obviously they're not going to be lead. Uh, we use our Dig Save, Dig Save New York Tickets, which, you know, it says water replacement or something like that to help expand our list. Uh, we spoke to local contractors and, uh, you know, and management of some of the larger facilities, just to kind of take those into inventory. There's still quite a bit to do. And so the, the next phase is this will be go, this goes in the water and sewer bills going out in December. And what we're doing is we've created a portal. It's on the city's website. And there's a quick little basic instructions. Then there's also a little kind of how to sheet. So what we're doing is we're just asking people to go into their own basement. Uh, you know, take a coin, take a magnet with them and, you know, just put in the basic information. And, you know, whether or not the magnet sticks or not, whether or not the scratch is not, and then we'll do the rest. We can use that to, uh, identify what the type of pipe is. So, uh, we're, we're kind of relying on the public's assistance with this. Otherwise, we have to go door to door. And there's a lot of doors. So, uh, this is going out. We've, it's been tested in other, uh, other municipalities. So, uh, it seems to, you know, it, it's a good next start, uh, next, uh, sorry, next start. It's a good next step. Uh, like I said, these will go in the water and sewer bills coming, uh, going out the end of the month. Uh, DPW, so this time of year, we start doing some inside work. Uh, this is some sheetrock repair in the, uh, police station. Um, this is, they have a breathalyzer that's in the holding cell. Apparently the breathalyzer of somebody in the holding cells got a really good loader on. It can, uh, make the breathalyzer not work that well. It's pretty sensitive. So this is moved out in one of the hallways, so that way, why there's no, whatever you call cross contamination, if you will, of, uh, of the results. Um, it was a bad month for traffic signs. This one was at the triangle up by the hospital. You can see the tire tracks here. The tractor trailer was coming over Columbia Street and took a left on Columbia Turnpike and just mowed over the sign. Uh, this was down at the top of Warren Street where Warren and, uh, Worth Alley and Prospect Beat. In this instance, a truck was doing work on the house on the corner. The brakes let go and the truck and the trailer mowed this sign down, mowed the one across the street down. And it missed the hydrant, thank God, and ended up crashing into that tree down at the bottom, so. Uh, those signs have been, uh, replaced, I believe, already. Uh, it's that time of year, so see seasonal service of the, uh, our snow blower. And also that time of year, this was the lighted, uh, Christmas tree that was put in the, uh, the Seventh Street Park. And like two days after it was put up, somebody decided to be a wise ass and yank it down. They broke the clips, but uh, we were able to fix it. So it's, it has been messed with since, thank God. The, um, just to go on the, the follow-up with Heather with the NIPA. So I've been, you know, I manage more of the construction portion of it. And, uh, the contractor, you know, we've been dealing with the inventory and scheduling of the project. He's actually going to be delivering some Conex boxes, which are Construction Excavation is what it stands for. Uh, there are the, basically the shipping containers that will have, you know, tools and materials in it. Uh, they're going to deliver that down behind the, the garage and, uh, in, in, uh, you know. And I believe they plan on starting work within the next month or so, but they're beginning to mobilize now. Uh, also, the, uh, this City Hall asbestos abatement is, uh, that RFP is out on the street. Um, bid opening is January third and we'll see what we, what we get. I have a couple of requests for a tour, so at some point we'll probably schedule one for next week and send it out as an addendum, so everybody knows about it. And, uh, we'll go from there. The Winter Walk, uh, Winter Walk starts with, uh, trucks and trailers full of all the cones and barricades. We place them out in the corners and the Police and Fire Department, they put them in place at Winter Walk. They take them down at Winter Walk. And then the next morning at six-thirty, we show up and remove all of them and bring them back down to the garage. Um, you know, just, you know, garbage cans after the big event. You know, load up the old garbage truck. Uh, we pick up all the no parking signs. All the, we put about thirty-five extra garbage cans out. We gather those. You know, so by nine o'clock in the morning, everything's pretty much picked up. Um, these are the lights that were taken out of the trees that were broken. Typically it's trucks or things over the course of the year damage them and, you know, with the new lights in the tree. So that's, that looks like. Uh, well, I think most people are familiar with, um, the volunteers at Lowe's. So these are one of the finished, uh, houses that we were able to transport. Uh, this was the last one coming off the trailer. This is Columbia County Highway Department with their low boy. They transported four of them for us. And we appreciate that. And, uh, these are just examples of some of the finished product. Uh, a lot of spray foam. Didn't know you can make, you know, macchiato, macchiatos and cappuccinos out of spray foam or snow. Uh, some pretty, pretty talented people there. Nice little acorn tree. Anyway, it was very nice and it was nice to see. Uh, just something else I saw this, uh, my, uh, daughter's moved away and so we were visiting her for Thanksgiving and this is something that I saw in a park that was there. And it's just kind of like a little picture area because it's screened by the land. Um, the sky is lined behind it. There's a nice tree back there. So, and if you're curious where that city is, uh, this is the clue. And if you know where that is, then you know the right city. As far as Ferry Street Bridge, we have, uh, the EBO stuff, which was a, the special meeting last month, which, uh, we sent all the dot paperwork to DOT. They've got the account set up. And at that point, the contractor was able to input their data. So now we're just waiting for DOT to review what everybody else has already done and finally say, you know, you're good to go. That's, that's about it. So.
Washington? Dallas, Texas.
Very good. It is Frederick Church Icebergs.
Icebergs in Dallas? Yep, Dallas squeezing the bar.
Only ones you'll find.
Okay, questions from council members? Council members, questions?
No, thank you.
I have a question for Rob.
Yes, go ahead.
Rob, um, uh, I'm actually asking about the National Grid, uh, work that was done on all many of the streets, but mostly specifically in, uh, State Street. I can see that it was paved over, but it's not a very good job that they did. I don't.
That's a, that's a, that's a temporary patch from the crew that did the installation. Talham, Talham is the contractor that's going to come in, mill all that down and, uh, finish it up the grade with concrete. Because you're right, it's, it's not, uh, it's not that good. And we've had discussions with great about making a good particular, not just because it needs to be, but also if.
Just knowing.
Yeah, if we get some weather, I mean, it'll wreak havoc with the plows, so, um, I met with them last week to, we walked, uh, most of the project. And that was something that I brought up specifically with them, so, uh, it's, it should take place within the next week or so.
And, and Rob, as Margaret, I think when you and I talked about this, when you explained it was temporary, that, that pretty much goes across the whole city, right? That they have to make at the end of the day.
Correct, so, yeah, there's, the one in State Street was done by the local crew, the guys that live here and, and work here, whereas all the rest of the projects were done by a contractor from out of town. But, and they all have to do, these are all temporary patches that have to be, uh, in the spring will be totally brought up to, new to the curb.
Great. Any other questions from council members? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you, Rob.
All right, thank you.
Um, let's see, moving right along, we have Communications, uh, the audits for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one are on the, uh, part of the communications as well as the, uh, general election, uh, report from the Columbia County Board of Elections. Um, resolutions. First resolution. Commissioner Deeds, introduction in a second, please. Dwan. Dwan and Arthur. The second resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a dog, uh, execute dog, no, execute agreement for a dog control officer. Arthur? The third resolution is our usual contract. Um, authorizing the mayor to enter that, that contract with Columbia Green Humane Society.
I'll introduce Arthur.
This question, let's.
Excuse me?
We're going to discuss any next.
Yeah, we, I know, we can discuss now, I'm just.
I'm worried on a first day to.
Yeah, that's, that's what it is. Which is actually pretty inexpensive. That's where my beloved Sparky goes on the Christmas.
Sorry, Tom, uh, the resolutions are not showing on the screen.
I, yeah, sorry, Margaret, I'm having trouble navigating this. Just give me a second.
Yes, blame, blame Michael.
Which one, which one do you want?
We're up to, we're up to date now. This is the one with the Humane Society.
And next resolution is accepting.
Tom? Tom?
Oh, Dominic.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, just on the Humane Society. I thought we were going to, and I don't know when the time is, just discuss, you know, the fee in terms of recovering fees um, from an owner, if, you know, for, you know, for the cost.
Right.
When can we address something like that?
Uh, we did, yeah, that was the whole, remember we changed the law.
Yeah, we changed that already.
Okay, cool. So, so we did, we did that last month, right?
Not last month.
Last year.
Early this year. It was January or February.
Yeah.
But yeah.
So the owners.
Cause the old law was that the city was liable for, like, my dog got out and got cat, well, captured, I guess, for lack of a better word, and then like held there. Um, the city was responsible for all the costs, but we pass that back on to the animal owner.
Great, okay, that, I must have missed that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, the next resolution accepts veteran cemetery plot donations. Dwan and Arthur. Um, the next resolution, please omit Conservation Advisory Council.
Well, this is the updated, I think.
Does not, no.
Are we still having in there?
We, we, we all received an updated version where CAC was removed.
Okay, mine, mine here doesn't have it removed.
Yeah, Michael sent out an email late, late afternoon with an updated version.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
I need an introduction in a second for this. Arthur? I don't know.
This is easy, Ryan.
I will sit, come real quick on that one. If anybody wants the pultation materials, I can show you where they live on the CAC site. And like you did in the meeting, that'll walk you through the presentation as well. You're excellent.
So I have a question about this.
Sure.
We had a special meeting on this a few weeks ago because during the application was the next week. And as far as I recall, and I checked the minutes, we didn't have a forum. So we didn't, we didn't vote on this. So this is now coming back presumably to be voted on next week. But what happened to the deadline? The reason we had a special meeting was the deadline was the next Monday or Tuesday.
We met the initial deadline.
Yeah, so Margaret, we submitted the application anyway without the resolution, but the funder has indicated that they probably will not, oh, give an award without this resolution. So they're allowing.
No, so you submitted an application that potentially committed the city to one point five million dollar contract?
We, we would still have to go back to the council for you to accept the award, correct? So, no.
There, there's no liability. It's contingent on A, the council supporting it by resolution and then B, the council voting to accept it if you win it.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
So the language in this resolution, Ryan, if you scroll down a tad to the end, the, the, the part B that you just said, this resolution says that, uh, if the city, the city commits to obligate the funding necessary, um, and it should, the city receive the grant assistance. The part B that you just said, as far as I understand it, is that the council can choose not to accept the grant. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the reason that we wrote that resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did you finish that comment? For that reason, this resolution is not accurate. We are, we should not have a, a resolution that commits this, the city to, uh, to, um, uh, funding this if we receive a grant assistance. I think that language needs to be changed.
I believe that the language here was written, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, which is that if we don't receive the full funding ask that we're doing, we don't have to proceed with it. I believe that was the edit, the amendment that I made to the.
Yeah, but if we do, we are obliged.
No, 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 Vicki, it's a difference of saying, like, if we don't get the full one hundred thousand, we're not committed to it. So it's like, if they came back and said, we can give you a thousand dollars.
Okay.
I, I, Ryan, I really think the language in this resolution needs to be clarified that we are not committed to, uh, obligating to this if we are given assistance.
Currently it is that we are committed. What Margaret wants to say is that, uh, an appeal that, you know, and then should the award be given to City of Hudson, that the council will then be presented with another option to accept it.
Exactly. Exactly. And Crystal could probably look at that, but usually, usually when we have things like this, Ryan, there's, there, there's no, uh, commitment on our part. We apply for things, we apply for grants, but it doesn't lock us into being committed to, um, if we're granted it, accepting it and funding the rest of the grant.
Yep, we can, so do we need a motion to amend it and have?
Thank you.
We just, uh, table it for now and fix it for the next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll do that.
Yeah, great, thank you.
The proposed solar array would provide, provide power to which, how, how much power would it provide?
Takes all of water and sewer line.
All of water and sewer all line.
Yeah, and basically after, after the cost of the system is paid over, paid off at around year eleven, it's a ballpark of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra in the DPW budget every year. So it's like, there's money upfront. We get to the break even and then say there's another ten years to get into full investment.
Back. Are there any more grants we can look into getting?
A lot, yeah.
I mean, more than the hundred thousand, because that's more of the office.
So, is it? Well, I think that there's, there's a combination in here as well, because I think part of it is there are also grants for the, for the municipal buildings as well.
Correct.
So those will need to be looked at in conjunction with DPW because it's all about the infrastructure grants as a whole. The reason that we're pursuing this one is that there are many grants that are actually given out of the DEC. Margaret, you may remember, I think you attended this session for Nikon with me. But if you remember in that session, what they said was where you can show that you're tying green and, uh, green energy solutions into water and sewage infrastructure.
I do remember.
The likelihood and the scale of which you can apply for increases dramatically because what they want to see is that you're tying in all of the sustainable capabilities together. And that actually, Vicki, to answer your question, opens up the doors to larger ones the state will give you. So I hope that if, if this gets accepted or funded, that the council next year can then start looking into some heavier hitting grant monies.
Okay.
Just, just one thing to point out here. I think somewhere in the nature of, and I, I, unfortunately, I think Rob's gone already, but somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand of, of this cost relates to.
Use the roof through the roof.
Right?
Yeah. It's, that's based, that's based what the county just did for their building as well.
Sure, exactly. So what I, I just wanted to bring up that, uh, Rob did put that dollar amount into his budget requests. Um, because he knows that it needed to be done, but given, you know, with, with priorities that had to be set and so forth. Uh, that, that ask was not granted in the budget, so we actually don't have the money for this. And it would involve borrowing money. Um, I just, I'm just putting that out there, that the BEA already reviewed a request for four hundred and fifty to repair the roof and rejected it.
Okay, moving right along. Next, uh, resolution is urging the governor to deny the Iroquois Pipeline Expansion. Introduction in a second. Arthur? Okay, Arthur. The next resolution accepts donations to the Hudson Youth Department. The next resolution accepts donations to the Hudson Youth Department. The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding that accepts donations from January through December. From the Friends of Hudson Youth, we've done this before, Arthur Dwan.
I know, he gotta look like, his poor gentleman's been racing.
I hope they brought pants. Oh, good, oh, look at that. The last resolution authorizes an amendment for expenses in the code enforcement department, this is to uh. Fix their car. And. Okay. Okay, okay. A reminder, on our desks are a number of local laws. Um, one about alcohol beverages. Which was sent back to legal, but community choice aggregation, which is sent back to legal. Um, and ready to roll at our next meeting, I believe, are. One about film and one of filming in Hudson and one about alarm systems.
Sorry, Tom, I just want to correct something on the uh alcohol piece.
Yeah.
That came from the mayor's office to the full council, although I worked with Crystal and Michael. On that particular uh code amendment, um it didn't actually come through the legal committee.
Yeah, I didn't say it did, actually, we referred back, oh, actually, you're saying back, right.
I I Michael and I worked directly on it, and Crystal reviewed it and so forth, but I it didn't actually. Come, the legal committee didn't discuss it as a committee.
Oh, okay. Um, now lastly.
Wait, are we, do we, are we talking about the Hudson filming law at all, or?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would, I would just, the only thing I would add is that for the um. We had maybe like a little more of a stipulation on the student films, this is like something that's like really close to my heart, I think that. Like the having a COI for.
Documentarians get charged triple.
I know, yeah. We're, we're really raking it in these days. Yeah, I just, I think that having, like, even if it's like student films of like, there there's, there's different levels of like high school. Like undergrad graduate, if someone's coming from NYU Tisch to film in Hudson, I think we expect that as part of the process to go through a COI. COIs take a really long time, I think the last thing you wanna do is discourage kids from like going out and feeling like intimidated. I know that there were, I surmounted that hurdle and was pressured at times to like. Get a film permit, I think the most important thing when you're like seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years old, is just to get out and make something, we don't wanna discourage that. So I think I would just add that like student, above like undergraduate would be a nice easy addition, so we don't discourage like local youth. Feeling like they need permission from the city to to make a film, so small thing, but that's.
Okay, yeah, Crystal, Margaret, have you, Margaret and Crystal, legal, how do you feel about that?
Oh, yeah, no, we, well, this is news, I don't know very much about filming, uh this one did actually come through legal, so um. Uh I think, Theo, if you could just shoot an email, because the audio is not quite, shoot an email describing the amendment that you'd like to see to this.
Sure, yeah, I'm, yeah, even, yeah, the the main thing is just uh. The COI, the certificate of insurance is just really annoying to get, again, quite expensive and um for.
Email.
Young filmmakers, yeah, email, yeah.
And and you, and you would, you would, your concern is undergraduate and below, correct?
I was, yeah, or something like that, yeah, undergraduate and below, it would be my, yeah.
Right.
Okay, um Margaret, you want to talk about these two documents?
Yes, yes, so um the legal committee has been looking at um. Something we've been talking about in the city for a while, reducing the speed limit from uh thirty miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. Um it is associated with very significant reduction in risk when there is a pedestrian involved in an accident. Less than half the fatalities are twenty-five versus thirty, it significantly reduces the length of time to stop. Uh from if you're going thirty versus twenty-five, it reduces the number of collisions because people have more time to react. Uh given the size of our city, uh reducing it from thirty to twenty-five would also. Uh not really incur more, it would incur less than a minute to go from, uh if you had all green lights, to go from Front Street to Fairview, so. And and from those terms, it it makes perfect sense, um and I think it'll make. It basically, we have a couple of streets linear twenty-five mile an hour items right now. It's very costly to do it that way because of the signage issues. Uh again, at the last Nikon meeting, we had a couple of presentations on this. There are a number of municipalities that have availed themselves of the new rule in New York. Where municipalities can actually decide to reduce from thirty to twenty-five without having to. Uh handle too many hurdles. So in order to do this, you have to have a traffic engineer work with you to submit. Uh your documentation to the state as to what you are planning. Um I reached out to two different engineering companies, uh Creighton Manning, which has done a fair amount of work in the city and has worked with. Um uh with our DPW, they worked on the Stewart uh section. Uh they have also done this in other municipalities, they provided us with a proposal of what the scope of work would be to um get our application together. Um it comes out to seventy-five hundred, which was, you know, a couple of different companies I talked to, that was in the neighborhood of what I was expecting. Uh then the other company that I spoke to, which is, if you wanna pull up the second one, Michael. Uh this is a company um that has done work in Rensselaer. Uh they are not as familiar with the city, uh and they listed out in detail their scope of services. The pricing for their project is over sixteen thousand. So in looking at these, uh you know, the legal committee looked at these, our instinct is. That we, and I would like everybody to read these before next week, but our instinct is that we should um reach out to Creighton Manning. Uh for their bid. Um, in my discussions with them, one of the things that was um I thought really helpful was when, you know, I was. Describing the the project and the traffic engineer who was on the phone was immediately familiar with every street in Hudson. And was able to say, well, you know, on this street, you might want to go down to thirty-first and then to twenty-five, because, you know, X, Y, and Z. But they had a kind of a granular knowledge of of the situation in Hudson. Uh that I think would be very efficient, and we could get through this very easily, working with them. Um so take a look at these, uh what I'm looking for. And I'll do a resolution, Tom, I don't know if you want me to do a resolution for each one, and then the council can vote on which one we want to move forward with. Um, happy to do that if that's what we need, uh but my recommendation would be to go with Creighton Manning uh proposal.
I think you just do the resolution of Creighton Manning, I don't, unless someone comes up with a reason for selecting the other, I think we'll probably just all.
I al- I also did check in with uh Rob Perry to ensure that, since he has worked Creighton Manning in the past. That there wasn't anything that we would be unaware of that might be, you know, some reason not to engage them, and he had no concerns.
Uh Heather, you have something you'd like to add to this conversation?
Yeah, just a confirmation that uh, given the fact that it's mid-December, I'm assuming this is gonna be a twenty twenty-four budget amendment. So we're also gonna have to identify the source of the funding for this, uh which I assume is gonna be used to fund balance, I just wanna confirm both of those elements.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other business, new business, council members? One more official meeting for. Five of you.
Um, what, can I say something, I want two resolutions. Um so, two resolutions that did from our office, not really our office, but that I've been involved in. Uh the planning board has a budget amendment that needs to be uh completed by the end of the year to pay for services related to. Their engineering consultant who has been helping the city uh navigate our. Uh relationship with the DEC and a speedy permitting for uh new sewer connections uh for upcoming projects. And it's not something that can really be charged to escrow because it's related to general planning for the city as a whole. So there's a budget amendment that will come forward next week, um we've just had trouble. Nailing down the the specifics of that resolution. Um and then the other one, the Conservation Advisory Council will be uh pretty significantly under budget for their materials. Uh line this year, they managed only to spend like eight thousand, yeah, under budget. So they have an additional four thou- about four thousand dollars left that they would add, that they would like to come to the council. To request that that amount be carried over into their budget next year for materials in order to do a. Pollinator garden planting project at the cemetery, um they of course would have. Um if they, they're just not able to do the all the procurement that they need in the next few weeks. For that project to fall, for it to fall under this year's budget, so. Um or the, before the resolution next week for you to review for that.
Okay.
Tom, I have, I have one other item, that, Michael's pieces, just one other item. Um as you all, I'm sure, are aware, we have been working with CAC on the um. The uh tree ordinance um piece, we were close to having a document, we met, we had, we had a review last week. We're close to having a document to bring tonight, but uh Crystal, we we had some amendments that we wanted to make after the last legal meeting. And uh I think, Crystal, you think you will have something for the next meeting, for the, for the.
Absolutely, I expect to have drafts circulated to the council um by Thursday or Friday.
Okay, so Tom, I'm I'm hoping that um even though we didn't have it in the informal. That we could, the full council could take a look at that and see if we could vote on legislation next week.
Certainly, I mean, we don't vote on the legislation, we just couldn't move it forward, we don't vote on a law that quickly, it has to. Go through the stages, but it'll be on next week.
Okay, that sounds good.
Anything else from council members first? The above, oh, the public. Nothing? Okay, we can rely on Arthur and Dwan for everything. And all those in here, please say goodbye to saying hi. We're done.